Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, April 24th, 2014. We're at the Havlin Middle School for our second monthly meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education. The time is now 6:35 PM. I'm calling the meeting to order in place of Mr. Duffy, the Vice President, who will be presiding tonight. He's just in the room that we're going to be meeting in for executive session rather than make them walk back and forth. Mr. Heater and Mr. Watson will not be joining us this evening as they had other commitments. So can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment, history of a particular person or persons, a student discipline matter, and matters of litigation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you.
May I have a motion to come out of executive session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting, a public session of the Board of Education meeting, and apologize for our lateness, but there were some items that needed to be taken care of. I believe there are no announced additions or modifications to the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Our first item will be pride.
Okay, so just to give an update on some of the events in our district, I'll start with athletics. The boys varsity track is four and oh. They've won all of the track meets, and again, we're very pleased to have them at home on some of these. The girls varsity track, where the girls' track team is two to two. The first Oval Office Invitational will be held on May 3rd at our home track and field, and the Mahal meet will be on May 17th. The boys' baseball, four to zero, ahead. Boys tennis, three, zero. Last year, they were the Mahal champs. They're hoping to go for that again. Both varsity and junior varsity girls softball, six and oh for the season. Lacrosse, three and three for the season. And due to weather, Crew hasn't really started their first race. Will be in Saratoga this Saturday. On the academic side, we have two teachers that we'd like to recognize tonight. Deb Krabcheck should be a name familiar to everyone at this point, but Deb Krabcheck has made it to the semifinalist round for Teacher of the Year in New York State. So congratulations to Deb to making it to the semifinals, and we certainly wish her the best. Also, a number of months ago, we announced that three of our teachers were selected for the newly instituted New York State Master Teacher Program, and we just received word this week that we have another science teacher, Heather Wheeler, who has also been accepted into that program. So congratulations to Heather. Nice to see some of our teachers really excelling and being recognized in the state and in some cases, in the nation. So congratulations.
Anybody else have something? All right, moving on to Section 6 of the agenda, Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, for the Superintendent's Report today, we're actually going to open the floor to have a conversation about the resolution that's on later in the agenda, but we do have our attorney here. So what we'd like to do is open the floor for some conversations about the pilot proposal that is on as a resolution for later on in the agenda. We had a special board meeting last Tuesday evening. It was a public session. It was recorded. We had some extensive conversations about the pilot agreement at that time, and we wanted an opportunity to discuss it further. In a nutshell, Taylor Manufacturing will be, is looking to move into the Salt Point building, and in order to offset their move, are, we're proposing to go into a pilot agreement for a 10-year period of time. The first five years would be the same taxes that we would normally collect over five years on that property. The second five years is a sliding scale based on the assessed value of the property at that time, starting at 20% and going all the way to 100% by the end of the pilot. So we did have-
It's 20% going to 100% of the difference between the assessed value currently and what that assessed value is five years from now.
Thank you. I keep forgetting to use that word, difference, so the difference. As I mentioned, with the exception of one board member who wasn't with us on Tuesday, and we have two board members that were here and now aren't, we did want a chance to have any questions that the board members may have about the pilot or any further conversation before we move forward with our agenda.
That would include any questions directed toward Dan? He could be-
Right. The point is to ask the questions now and not at the time that we vote on the resolution, so.
So the first question that comes to mind is how is this pilot structured differently from a standard pilot that Dutchess County Industrial Development Agency would grant?
So as a general rule, the Dutchess County IDA has a uniform tax exemption policy which is modeled under Real Property Tax Law, Section 485-B. Basically, it's a 10-year term. In the first year of the deal, it would be, they'd have 100% abatement. In other words, they'd be paying no taxes whatsoever. The district would recover no payments, and it would phase out in 10% increments. So year two, school district would receive 10%. Year three, 20%, so on, until by year 10, they would receive 100%. Under this pilot schedule, which is a deviation from the uniform tax exemption policy, the district will be receiving, as the Superintendent indicated, in the first five years, they would be paying a, they would be making payments based on the current assessment of the property, which is $1,450,000 times the applicable tax rate. So the school district would be receiving more payments early on. Over the second part of the, the last five years, the assessment would jump. So the district would still be getting the, whatever the tax rate is, times the $1,450, but then the difference between whatever the ultimate assessment value of the property is, less $1,450, that would be abated on an accelerated schedule in 20% increments. So the, the good thing about, in its current form, is that the school district will always be receiving payments based on the current assessed value times the tax rate, and that was a concession that had been agreed to by the applicant. And then in addition to that, they'll be getting more payments as the assessment jumps in the second five-year period.
Can you estimate the difference between, in taxes paid under this pilot as opposed to the standard pilot?
That is, I'm not able to do that because what, what we don't know is what the assessment will be in July of 2020, when it's going to jump. That, that is, that is not clear. What I will say, though, is that if the deviation, the applicant was not going to accept a uniform tax exemption, was, did not, I'm sorry, the applicant was not seeking assistance from the IDA based on a, on the uniform tax exemption policy. So if the deviation doesn't happen, they would not, they may not relocate, and therefore, you know, the property would be left vacant.
It's my understanding that if we don't approve this pilot, the Dutchess County Industrial Development Agency has the power to unilaterally impose it. Is that accurate?
Under their, under the uniform tax exemption policy, while it's the practice of the IDA to seek consent from the local taxing jurisdictions, they ultimately have the power to approve the application and impose, and give you, as long as they set forth the reasons for the, for the deviation, they can grant it. And you should just be aware that all of the other taxing jurisdictions have agreed to a, the fixed amount of the payments based on the current assessment over the 10 years. The Hyde Park Central School District would be the only taxing jurisdiction that would be receiving additional payments, a pro rata share of the, of the pilots based on this deal. So it is conceivable that if the district did not consent to this, the IDA could still agree that it will be a, approve the deal, and you, you would be receiving payments according to the same schedule as every other taxing jurisdiction.
Dan, I have an immense amount of respect for you, and I think a pretty good working relationship, but can I summarize what you just said?
Sure.
Effectively, yes. They can impose it if they, if it's their will.
Effectively, yes, they can impose it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just, and I recognize that you're probably not a expert on Dutchess County IDA.
No, I'm not.
Okay. But essentially, what we're doing here is the, the owner, the applicant for this, is moving from a location in the city of Poughkeepsie to a location in the town of Poughkeepsie, maybe five miles away. In your experience with IDAs, is that the intent of an IDA to provide that kind of an incentive for a, for such a short-term move? My concern is a precedent set here. So what happens if Company A and Company B simply decide to start changing properties? You know, can you avoid, you know, can we, are we going to end up with a snowball effect here where other companies, and maybe it's not even just in Hyde Park or in the Hyde Park School District, but potentially just move down the street and expect that they're going to get tax relief of 100%, you know, with a, with a, over a 10-year period? I mean, is this, does, is this the way the IDAs are set up, and is this the purpose of them? I always thought it was to bring new business in and generate business and bring, you know, more employees in and, and create revenue, because this, this is a pretty tax-neutral, or it's, well, it, it's not building, it's not developing anything here in the county.
Yeah, so-
And I think that there may be other motives, but I'd look for your input.
Okay, so in response to your initial question, is this something typical? I don't think this is, all of these applications are evaluated on a case-by-case basis. The IDAs were created with the idea, as you, as you had mentioned in the second part, to stimulate investment in the community, to create new jobs. But part of the policy of the IDAs also to retain jobs. So often, what happens is that businesses will say, "New York is not a tax-friendly jurisdiction," despite the governor's-
Really? I hadn't heard that.
Despite, despite Governor Cuomo's assertion to the contrary, and they say that they have business, they have business opportunities elsewhere because it's just cost prohibitive based on the tax burden. So the idea is, an IDA may get involved to redevelop a particular project, property, where there may not be new job creation on a permanent level, but there will be job retention. And so on, in some cases, to prevent situations where manufacturing facilities go elsewhere to other, to greener pastures down south, out west, they will give them the opportunity to redevelop properties and give them a, a tax break. That's ergo the IDA assistance that allows them to do that.
Do I understand that this, this will retain five jobs in Dutchess County? Is that what the employment is?
I believe the, in the application, I have it right here, just bear with me one minute. I believe it's supposed to create new, three additional jobs, but to retain, I think, somewhere around 20, in the mid-20s, so I do have-
Six, I think.
I'm sorry?
I think it was 26.
I think they have currently 23, and I think as a result of this project, they will end up with 26.
I would just want to make a statement that I think that, you know, and I don't want to come across as being anti-business. I just think that as a district, we are, we have a lot of residential homeowners that are going to have to pick up the slack, you know, everybody's going to end up picking up a little bit of the slack. It appears we won't take advantage of any appreciation in the assessment, assuming that they go in and make improvements. The assessed value may increase, but it's going to be, we're going to be locked in at the 1.45 million, which is a current assessment. I just think that it's, it's a tough situation. I mean, I'd love to have more and more business move in, but I just think that the value here is going to be borne by the taxpayer, the other taxpayers of the district, and I think everybody's struggling as it is. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see, I did have, well, let me make a comment first in response to Perry, and I don't disagree. As a matter of fact, it's a concern I had early on with this, but, you know, and to explain my vote, so to speak, when the time comes, or by way of explaining my vote when the time comes, because I have given this a lot of thought. You know, there's always the, nobody has a crystal ball, I guess, to start with that. And so I have to, it's, I feel like in sometimes, you know, I'm really at the craps table at the casino, trying to figure out what I'm going to do and where am I going to place my bet and throw the dice. And I don't want to make light of that when we're certainly discussing not only my tax dollars, but everybody's tax dollars that I represent. But, you know, I kind of, my, my crystal ball, or I guess worst-case scenario is, you know, right now, the property we've discussed is assessed for really round numbers, $1.5 million. So if the, if the company does not move in and take ownership of that property, at least for the foreseeable future, that's probably what we're going to expect to receive in tax, you know? So for the first five years of this pilot, this manufacturer comes in and will pay at least what we're going to get even for the building being empty. So I can accept, okay, that's, you know, what, that kind of keeps us even, and I do appreciate their efforts there. My thought is if they, if the firm does not move in, and that building, and this is for people who don't know, by the way, if, for really the, the old-timers of the area, and it's not that long ago, but if anybody remembers Fargo Manufacturing on Salt Point Turnpike across from the St. Peter Cemetery, just before the rail trail crosses, that's the property we're talking about. So just for clarification, because Salt Point Turnpike's a long road, and when you say the Salt Point Turnpike property, people probably can't even picture where it is. It is located in the town of Poughkeepsie, but in our school district. So anyway, getting back to my thoughts, if, if, if that property were to remain vacant, again, my best crystal ball. My concern is that at some point, you know, the property owner could kind of get fed up with it being empty. I mean, it's, really hasn't been much of anything since Fargo moved out. A flea market moved in there for about 10 minutes, and again, not to be funny, but it was about a year or so. Hardly a heavy, you know, job type of operation or manufacturing operation, and it disappeared. And at some point, you know, my feeling is, you know, you could have an owner that will say, "Well, I've had about enough of this, and one way to reduce my tax bill, because I can't move this property and move this building, is I'm just going to tear the thing down." And that's always a possibility. Don't know whether it would happen or not. I don't have a crystal ball. So that kind of explains, you know, my feeling is, we get what it's assessed for now, no matter what, for the first five years, and then going forward, we'll start to see a sliding scale of an increased assessment until, and ultimately after five more years, is being paid at full assessed value. And I do take into consideration that this manufacturing firm has been in the area for a long time, 103 years, I heard the other night. Sounds like they're not going anywhere, you know, tomorrow, which is certainly encouraging. I'd be probably more suspicious of this if this was somebody moving into town for the first time. So that's kind of, I guess, my feeling, and also in light of Mr. Mittermeyer's comments earlier about, well, what if we didn't consent to this? What's the worst-case scenario? And it could be just whatever the IDA decided it was going to be. So the fact that, you know, certainly that the, you know, the applicant has taken the time to try to meet our concerns, because I'm sure we're, we're his biggest tax bill, or would be his biggest tax bill, and, and, you know, trying to minimize the impact to some extent on the other taxpayers, although there won't be a total lack of impact, but certainly lot, less than could have been. So that, I guess, that's just my kind of comments on how I'm going to vote. Now, I did have a question the other night that I asked in public, so I do want to ask Dan this because I think it's important for people to understand, just because, you know, you did opine on it earlier today. But for the benefit of the public, because I asked the question in public last, on Tuesday night, if the, if the applicant, or the, and again, I don't expect this with this particular firm, but if they were default on the pilot agreement, could you just explain what would happen? You know, what happens to the, the, you know, the taxable status of the property if they did not make the payment? Because for people to understand that, rather than writing a check to the tax collector, they actually write, you know, this agreement's with the school district, and they will write a check directly to the school district for what would be their tax bill. So if you could explain what would happen?
Yeah, sure. So under the terms, and this is pretty standard in pilot agreement language, there are default provisions that in the event the occupant of the property does not pay their pilot agreement, any of the payments under the pilot, they can be defaulted, and default basically puts the property back on the taxable roll. So prospectively, from that date of default, during the next time that the property is, goes on the taxable, taxable status date and goes on the final assessment roll, the school district will, would receive whatever the taxes are based on the final assessment going forward. No abatements or anything like that. It'll be assessed valuation times tax rate like anybody else. On the flip side, however, if, in order to, and to recover payments, because these are contractual payments, there are provisions under the general municipal law whereby the school district, as a beneficiary, can seek to recover the unpaid payments through a court proceeding. Added on to that are statutory interest and penalties, which are actually more than what you would ordinarily get if a taxpayer was delinquent. Plus, you can recover attorney's fees so that you're made whole. I think that was the intent of the statute when it was amended to create the pilot agreements back in 1994.
Okay, thanks. And I, you know, appreciate you, you had offered us that earlier, and I, just because I had asked the question in public, and it was a generic question, it certainly doesn't apply to this applicant, but all applicants in this potential situation. I just wanted to, you know, have the, the public to hear the answer to the question that I asked the other night, so thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions?
The one thing I noticed in, Dan, your recommendation was to approve the pilot. You make suggestion, would suggest approving the resolution, but conditioned upon legal counsel review, review and recommendation.
Correct. I have, I was in receipt of a draft pilot agreement late yesterday. I've begun my review of it. It was the first time I did, that I've seen it, and I will have a couple of suggested edits that I'm going to send to the council, to the IDA, which I hope he'll find to be acceptable. They're, they're pretty straightforward. So I would ask that the resolution to the board be made conditioned upon or subject to, to my review and final recommendation.
I don't think the one that's in there has that language in it.
No, it, it does not, so.
Make sure we add that when we move it.
Yeah, in fact, I could, I could, if, if you would permit me, I'd give a copy to the district clerk to show, if she could read my handwriting, I could show her where Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments. Pretty sure I support this pilot agreement, just some other thoughts that Kevin touched on a couple of things, but the long-term scenarios that could come up, you know, crystal ball, we have one, great, but we don't. The building's been vacant for quite a few years, I believe, the old Fargo building. So, I mean, to get a person to purchase and operate in there is, is a plus, whether it might be just a, you know, the city loses, but town gains, and we're not here to, we're not going to lose that much out of this deal. There's another thought, but I just lost it. Wow, that's it.
Hey, it's been a long night already.
This may be a little out of protocol, but I'd be, I mean, I know that the, the owner is here, the representative for, for Taylor's here, and I appreciate the, you know, that he was here the other night, and he's here again tonight. I guess my big question is, is your deal contingent on this happening? Would you go into that building whether we make this tax change or not? Because as I look at it, it just doesn't seem like a lot of money when you're looking at, at your business operation. This seems like a, a small element, although I know every dollar counts. I would just be curious as to whether or not that's, is this a deal breaker?
Well, it's not, it's not a done deal at this point, and I think you answered your own question, is that every part counts.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, I remembered my other thoughts. Going along with, you know, the vacant building and up until they're not moving in there is, in the near future, or the long-term future, five, 10 years, this property could, could have no occupancy, it could be turned over to a nonprofit. If it gets turned over to a nonprofit, then we get nothing. So, I mean, all those scenarios have to be thought about.
Anyone else? All right.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, if anybody in the public obviously has any comment, that's why we'll have a public participation, you know, session before it voted on, so people, anybody here can have an opportunity to comment if there's a question or whatever, so.
We don't have public comment at this time. We do have it later, unless the board wants to modify the agenda to do public participation now. We were going to have our discussion on this topic under Superintendent's Report.
It's up to everybody else. I mean, they can wait, I guess, you know, we're voting on it a little later on in the agenda, but-
And the public participation will occur before the vote occurs.
There'll be a public participation before the vote occurs, so.
All right, then moving along to 6.2, the Havlin Middle School presentation.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Principal Eric Shaw will be starting off the presentation.
We're happy Mr. Shaw has his voice back. It was touch and go there for a couple days this past week.
Certainly working on it. So I take it up to, guys, welcome you to the beautiful Havlin Middle School auditorium. It's a pleasure to have you guys here. It's a pleasure to come and work in this building every day, and I'm glad that you guys could share it with me today. To begin, we'll start off with our own piece of pride. And what I did was, I just sort of did some recent pride. We've had a lot of wonderful things happen throughout the school year, and just wanted to talk quickly, remind people, we've had musical concerts, we have musical concerts coming up in the next few weeks. We hosted the All County Musical Festival here, which was a big event and was well-attended, and it went off wonderfully. We have a few District STEM Science Fair winners. We have something, it was awesome to see if you got a chance, it would have been great, the Aladdin Production, Disney, Aladdin Junior, what happened a few weeks ago, and that was a tremendous production. And also, just being the new guy here, and just going and having the ability to sample and see all the wonderful academic programs, is something I thought was very important to put into pride as well. So, the next slide you're going to see is, it's our academic scores. The first thing I want to note is, it's not your typical slide. We'd see longitudinal data of 2011, 12 compared to 13, because one of the things we all know is that in 2013, we administered a new exam, and I think it'd be fair to start comparing something that wasn't even, it's not comparable. So, the first set of numbers you see there are your typical comparison where a principal come up and talk about where the threes and or fours lie, where the standard of proficiency used to be. And I also added here levels two, three, and four, because the state is sort of in flux right now. They're talking about our level twos as demonstrating partial proficiency or working towards proficiency. I thought it was important to note that, as they're in flux, and they're trying to adjust to the test they've given us, our students are in flux, and they're working to adjust, and our teachers are in flux, and they're working to adjust as well. So I just thought it was fair, wanted to be fair and note that. In terms of other academic performance, in our eighth grade level, we do offer some high school-level courses, Regents courses, if you will, and integrated algebra and earth science. I did do the longitudinal data there, because it is the same test over the last few years, and the participation there speaks for itself. So, this year, we reestablished a BLT here, the Building Level Team here at Havlin Middle School, and we've worked on a lot of things since November on. And really, our biggest focus is taking a lot of these large data points that we've received, first being the focus review that happened spring of last year, which was a big undertaking. Secondly, was the Parent Involvement Survey that we did this past January. Also, the BLT has worked on some RTI components in terms of working towards strategic plan goals and building level goals.
If you could describe the acronyms or flush them out, so response to intervention.
Sure, absolutely. The DTSDE is the District Tenet for School District Evaluation, and that is part of the reality that we are a focused school. We had to actually survey all of our school community, from parents, teachers, and students, and that happened spring of 13. The Parent Involvement Survey, you guys are aware of, and will hear more about it as a global look tonight. RTI is Response to Intervention. That's how we're trying to meet the needs of all of our learners in our classroom, and then identify those who aren't really progressing forward with the universal instruction, then really tailoring instruction inside the classroom for those students. And then, we had a district focus review come in in February, and they came in for three days, and they really, with a fine-tooth comb, went through this school, and they talked with student groups, and parent groups, and teacher groups, and administrators, and anything you could think of, they looked under every rock and every corner. And they gave us some initial findings, and the BLT, the Building Level Team, went through that this year. What I put over here on the right-hand side of the slide is the general findings from the Parent Involvement Survey. That was the most recent work we did. And just to summarize quickly, one of the things we came across is parents feel the school has shared information. However, they're feeling like the information is shared on the new standards wasn't necessarily helpful for them. Secondly, they felt welcomed and informed and comfortable. However, they'd like to learn more about how they can help their children home based on the new style of instruction the Common Core is expecting us to do. And thirdly, parents are willing to participate and be partners, but we're still, we still need to find the right options for them. That's sort of the general feedback. And so our next steps to the BLT is going to take those three large data points and identify areas for improvement and goals, and see what really meshes together, and move forward with that. And just, importantly to know is that the district focus review, those are just initial findings. You've got about three or four sentences per tenant statement, and we should be expecting a full report. I'm hoping by August, I'm not sure if that'll come to fruition or not. Extra co-curriculum activities, we have two extended-day activities. I call them extended-day activities that happen here at Havlin. The first is a literacy program that's through the 21st Century Learners Grant, and they're coming in for three seven-week sessions. They run it for three hours a day from three to six, and we've identified students in the building that need support in literacy development and growth. And the purpose of the program is to work with these students around literacy, and in hopes to move them a half a grade level within that seven-week period of time. We just finished our first session. I'm just happy to report the rough results are in, and we're looking at somewhere around 82 to 84 percent of students who participated actually didn't in fact move that half a grade level, so I'm pretty happy to report that. I guess I could put that under pride. Also, to note that, you know, we just, Monday, we just kicked into our second seven-week session, and happy to report that some of those students are returning. So we're hoping to see even more growth as we move forward. The second piece is a Bard STEM Camp that we're doing. It's a collaboration, another grant program, and it's really working with seventh-grade students, teachers, and a teacher from the high school, with Bard professors, and they're going on one Saturday a month to Bard, and that started in January. And that's five sessions through the end of the year, and then there's a week-long session, I think it's the second or third week of July, where they'll be there Monday through Friday, working on STEM education activities. On the co-curricular side, we have some official clubs. We have the Drama Club, the Ecology Yearbook, and Student Council. We have some additional student clubs, they're sort of unofficial. These are teachers that are giving up their own time to do it. You know, we had some teaching assistants that were in the building last year who retired, who really did some really good, great work for the kids, and we tried to replicate and continue the spirit of. So we have an art club that happens, and we have a chess club that happens, and also a crochet club, which is new this year. And also, intramural sports is still big in our building, and it runs grades six through eight, and it's boys and girls, and we run that in the fall and the spring.
Just a quick mention, the STEM program, for anybody who's not familiar, is a program basically is grouping together science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and showing how they interact and work together as part of the program. So it takes the academics and gives it a more practical face at times for these kids, which has made a significant difference for kids, particularly those that are more hands-on oriented, to suddenly understand what the interactions are. It's a great program.
Thank you. I appreciate that. In terms of character education, we've done a lot of work here. The biggest cornerstone for that is our PBIS program. It's not new here. It's been here for quite a while, I'd say about eight or nine years now. And you see a portion of it in terms of the posters that we have in all different areas of the building. There's one here, there's one on that side, whether it's the hallway, the classroom, the bathroom, the bus, the auditorium, the gymnasium. We really work with kids and practice sort of those pro-social or appropriate behaviors and activities, and how we expect things to occur. And we actually even break it down to the lesson level in classrooms, especially at the beginning of the year. We've had some wonderful PTA assemblies. One was Mr. Halligan's Ryan's Story, which dealt with teasing, harassment, bullying. We followed that up with a few lessons in the classroom. These are building-wide lessons that occurred in November and December. Red Ribbon Week, No Name Calling Week, our Student Council, and that's a picture of them donating food to the Hyde Park Food Pantry. We did care packages for Valentine's Day for troops and for local homeless, and lots, a lot. And I could have kept going on and on. There's a lot of activities that happen and are available for kids in terms of building and developing character. And finally, the last portion is Parent Community Involvement. Our biggest branch for that, and probably the trunk of that, is our PTA here. They're dynamic. They run a lot of things, and they are behind-the-scenes for a lot of the support for kids, whether it's dances at night, or whether it's the honor roll breakfast, or whether it's recognizing staff during Staff Appreciation Week. They just do a tremendous amount. They've had two book drives. Both book drives resulted in funds back to our library, so they could purchase books through Scholastics. And just, also, they are also the providers of our grade-level assemblies through their own fundraising efforts. We have a partnership with community organizations as well. As you guys are aware, the SRO Program, Dutchess County Cape, Grace Smith House, AAUW, which, you know, is an interesting organization, approached me at the beginning of the year, and I had them come be part of our Parent Teacher Night in September. And it's a national organization, American Association of University of Women, and they really work in areas of education and understanding of community needs, and the arts for the status of women. And they actually had that seventh-grade Girls Conference at Dutchess Community College. They're here for our Parent Teacher Night, and a few of our girls actually attended, so I was pretty excited. And we're always looking to branch out and find different avenues for the community. And the last partnership, I wanted to actually, well, of course, I don't want to leave out Teen Center. That's been a longstanding thing here. That's a partnership with the Hyde Park Town Rec Department, and they come in, they do like a Friday evening, four or five, I think it's five Friday nights throughout the fall, where they come in, they set up activities, they have a DJ, they have crafts, they have a lot of different things. Those are well-attended. We usually get about 150 students there as well, so pretty impressed with that. And finally, the last one was a partnership that happened this year, just in looking for a way to save some money, and looking for a way to support the arts. We actually ended up renting our set from Aladdin, from Clifford Middle School in the Kingston City School District. And normally, our set was fairly expensive in the last few years, like a $1,500 rental, and we were able to rent the same set they used in the fall for $500. So I was pretty happy with that and that collaboration. And a lot of work goes out to Ms. Murphy, Mr. Scattonado, who helped really pull that through. So, are there any questions?
Yes, Eric, your Healthy Kids Program, how many students participate in that? Is it all, and is it all grade levels?
Okay, so it is all grade levels, and it's not just us here. It's actually elaborated a little bit there. It's a grant that's across two different school districts. It's about a $380,000, $390,000 grant between us and Highland Falls Central School District. It's across the next three years, this is your, next two years, this is year one. It is all grade levels, and actually, we partnership with Ralph R. Smith Elementary School. And for our district, we have up to 100 slots of students who could participate. Here in the building, we started with 40 for this program. That was our target number, and we actually had 35 students finish it throughout.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Just really, you know, thanks, Eric. You're doing a great job here at Havlin. And I also, you know, appreciate the slide on character education. I think that's really important, you know, we always, you know, to, not to sound old-fashioned, but you always talk about the three Rs, you know, but, you know, education really is more than that, and it's about how you become a good citizen and how you contribute to the world. And that's the, an excellent example, that whole page, just the various things that the students are involved in, you know, because when they get ready to take their place in the real world, and it's learning to help others, so, thanks.
No problem.
Thank you, Eric. A very informative presentation. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is the final overview of the budget presentation. Greer is going to kick it off.
Good evening. A couple of years ago, it was determined that before we go into the final budget presentation, we really need to regroup and focus on what it is, no, go back to the pride one, next one, yeah, what it is we're doing. What does our budget do? So, the budget is an $87 million budget. It's very personnel-intensive, and our goal every year is to balance the programmatic needs of our students, all 3,600 of them, with the fiscal constraints that our community encounters. And one of our guiding rules is that there is a mindset on what an education, a comprehensive education, is supposed to offer for students, and that is that you have a school musical, you have a yearbook, you have some dances, you have athletics, you have academic programs, and your school day starts very early in the morning. It goes into the evening hours up until nine and 10, nine or 10 o'clock every evening with athletics and play practice, and it goes year-round. We have summer programs. So, I'm going to take a few minutes before we do the budget presentation to just really focus us on what it is that we do here. So, just a few minutes of pride. So, our academic and pro, our academic program, we have a research-based literacy program. We have science programs. I'm not going to read every one of these. Regents prep programs, we have 15 advanced placement courses offered at our high school. We have summer programs. We have camp programs. We have partnerships with the Early Childhood Program. At the high school, we have Grad Point, which is a new credit recovery program. So that's, in addition to all the traditional courses, in a nutshell, those are some of the other things that we do to make our program unique and enriched. Community collaborations. Each time you go to a building, we ask our principals to talk about community collaborations. We've worked very hard at this over the years. We feel that our community has a lot to offer, and if we open up our arms and let our community organizations in, we have, we can only gain more for our students by doing so. We're a college-rich area, so we have partnerships with Vassar College, Bard, Marist, Mount St. Mary, Dutchess Community College, and SUNY New Paltz. We also collaborate with the Anderson Center. In fact, I was there this morning for the Hyde Park Chamber Breakfast. April is Autism Awareness Month, and every April, we go to the Anderson Center. We also have one of our retired teachers facilitating an ACEON autism program, which is a tennis program on Saturdays, where our tennis players work with autistic students every Saturday morning. It's an excellent program. For our community members that just want to get involved in how we put all of our non-academic programs together, we have our Facilities Steering Forum that meets monthly, and our Budget Input Group. Parent involvement, we have parent involvement at many levels. We have our PTAs, building leadership teams, a district leadership team. We have academic nights, we have fun nights, we have workshops. So we try to involve our parents wherever we can. I think on the next slide, you'll see we have a tremendous parent involvement in our booster clubs. We have athletic booster clubs, we have theater booster clubs, we have drama booster clubs. So, our parents have several venues to get involved, and we find that the parents get involved the most where the interest of their students lead them to. So if their students are involved in the art program, they're in the art booster club. If they're in the theater program, or music, or athletics. So we can move on. Our Fine and Performing Arts is probably one of our real shining stars in the district. It's been a portion of our district that has increased every year. So just in a nutshell, our art students are the recipients of about $750,000 worth of scholarship money. Again, we have a National Honor Arts Society, an International Thespian Society, that's the drama. We had students in the NISM, which is the New York State School Music Association. So 70 students chosen, 100 and student, 20 students perform in our spring festival, hundreds of students involved in our drama programs. And we also, as you know, have our Allen Digital Organ Lessons and Program, and we hear the organ as much as we possibly can at the high school. And that is a service that's the theater, the organ theater is a donated service in exchange for some space to work on some of their other organs. Again, continuing in Fine and Performing Arts, we have students participating in all kinds of competitions. We have the Tri-M Music Society, the String Ensemble just performed the other night at the 40 Under 40. We try to have, when we talk about community collaborations, not only is it inviting the community in, frequently our students go out into the community to make presentations or to perform. Athletic program, we have over 25 competitive teams. Mahal Scholar Athletes, we have approximately 200 per year. That means they have to maintain an average of, I think, above 85 to get designated as a Scholar Athlete. We have twosome races, jump ropes for hearts, and many other activities in the athletic program, as well as what was mentioned earlier, our new track and field facility. So, before we go into the budget presentation, it's always nice to at least take a look at why we're here and why we put together this budget, and that's exactly why.
Greer, I, just looking at this entire listing, so impressive, but a couple that appear to have been left off that I would like to mention is, we have several of our employee groups. several of our employee groups getting involved, getting involved in community activity. The, there is the golf tournament that's run. There were several donations raised by the, for other organizations and stuff like that. So, every aspect of the school district gets involved in one way or another in community service, and it's an outstanding program, all the way around.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. Our CSEA does a Relay for Life, our Transportation Department does a fundraiser, a golf outing for Hyde Park kids in need, the Hyde Park Teachers Association does, you know,
Scholarship.
Scholarships, golf outings, they'll do an ice cream social and book swap at the budget vote. So yes, that's a good point. Our employees are very involved as well. Okay, so we'll move forward with the budget presentation. This is the final presentation and the adoption night. So, we're presenting two propositions, as always. The first proposition is the general operating budget, and the second is our transportation proposition. The first proposition, our general operating budget, is $87 million. The most important thing to note here is that the budget-to-budget increase is 3% and the tax levy is 2.03%. That is within our tax cap limit. That becomes critical for a number of reasons. First and foremost, we don't, if you exceed the tax cap, you need to go out for a 60% majority vote. If you stay within the levy, you get what's considered a democratic vote. Well, it's set up that way, but we are within our tax levy limit. In order to get there, we are allocating $2.5 million out of our fund balance, $1 million out of our reserves. We cut in a number of areas, not programs. These cuts represent squeezing in, tightening our belts, so less mileages, conferences, less substitutes, because if you're not going out, you don't need substitutes coming in. Overtime, we're cutting back on next year, and then attrition. Sadly to say, our enrollment continues to decline, and I think it's been about 100 every year. And at our last enrollment report, yes, we are down 77 students from where we started this school year off. So that continues to remain true, that our enrollment is declining. And as your enrollment declines, you can pare back on your staffing. The overall state aid increase is 7.62, but that includes building aid. If you take out building aid, our state aid increase to the budget is 5.11% this year. The tax freeze is something new. What's important to note here is that if we exceeded our tax cap, then our residents would not be eligible for the rebate. I'm not going to get into year one, two, and three. But for this coming year, we stayed within our tax levy limit, and by doing so, our residents who are eligible will be able to apply for the rebate. I'm not going through the rest of that. I mention this because although we had an increase of state, in state aid of 5.11%, our overall aid loss since 2010 is $15 million. I've spoken about this a couple of times, I won't go into too much detail. But in 2010, in order to close the gap in the state budget, they took a chunk of our state aid allotment and said, "Well, you're not going to get that because we need that to help close the state budget." So our total loss is $15 million since 2010. We mentioned that because of declining enrollment, we are pairing back in some areas. The administrative position we eliminated, not this year, but the year before, was the 10-month Assistant Principal at FDR. Due to some extenuating circumstances after the budget was adopted last year, we did ask for a Dean of Student position to be put in for one year to help us through a transition year. That year is up. So as we expressed two years ago, to cut an administrative position, this is the year that it will be realized. I do want to add that if you did the adult-to-student ratio at the FDR High School right now, it's seven, one adult for every seven students. If you count the total number of adults in the building per student, it's one adult for seven students. So, any cuts are felt. We've said this very publicly, Mike Ruela, as Dean of Students, did an outstanding job. He's going to be a phenomenal administrator. But we are, we mentioned, a year ago, we'd cut an administrative position. We came back and we asked for a dean for one year, and that year is up. Again, based on reduced enrollment, we can pare back. We just have less need for teachers if you lose children through declining enrollment. Also, every year, we have some part-time teachers that are one-year assignment. So we are reducing some of the part-time positions that are one-year assignments. And then we have one swap that we're going to do to help out the middle school with some of their response to intervention by putting a certified math teacher in. And in order to do that, to add the teacher back in, we are reducing the teaching assistants by three. And now we do have more than three teaching assistants retired, so nobody loses their We have a few additions every year. Again, it's a balancing act. A couple of years ago, we eliminated, we reduced the Student Resource Officer at Haveland Middle School by point five, 2.5. And after having that cut for a couple of years, based on the recommendation of the middle school administration and the safety team and the needs of the district overall, because the Student Resource Officers, while they're housed in a building, they service all of our schools. We were recommending to reinstate the Student Resource Officer to full-time. I mentioned the trade for the three teaching assistants for the math teacher to address our students that are really struggling with math. The other thing is, and this is covered through a reorg of some of our overtime funds, we really need some, a facilities person with some flexible hours. So, having a point-two groundskeeper to help keep our, our facilities open on the weekends, we are putting in a point-two groundskeeper, and that will be offset by reducing some of the overtime costs. Biggest part of our budget increase each year, we said we had a 3% budget-to-budget increase, is certainly our insurance, our benefits, and our salary increases, and increases in debt service. I'm not going to go through each of these. Again, back to the tax cap. Okay, we are adhering to the, to the mandate. The allowable levy growth factor is 1.46, which is down from 2013 at 2%. But when you put everything in the formula, our tax levy increase can go to 2.03, and that's our recommendation. If we did not have the fund balance and reserves to offset our budget gap, we need to go out for an 8.31% tax levy. Never fly, would never get it passed. The important thing to note here is that we are still putting together a budget that relies on using our savings account. If we weren't using $3.5 million from our, our fund balance and reserves, we would have to make that up with a tax levy of 8.31. This is how our proposition for our general operating budget is put together. This is the breakdown of percentages. As you can see, we have a 29.8% state aid that helps, 65% is from the local tax levy, our fund balance, reserves, and some other revenues. Here's a pictorial representation of this. All of our budget presentations are online on the website. Our, here it is, here's how it's broken down. The administrative portion of our budget is 9.33%. Again, the golden rule is, don't have an administrative budget that's above 10%. So we're maintaining an administrative budget of under 10%. Our capital portion of our budget is 12.71%. And then our program is 77.96%. That's what we do. We have about 750 employees that come to work every day to take care of children. That's what we do. And all of the programs that we mentioned. We've gone through these several times, so I'll... We propose a one-budget vote. We feel that we've put together a responsible budget. We don't put together two budgets because right now, to do anything differently, we can't tap into, any more into our savings account. Anything, any other budget would result in cuts. So if we wound up defeating budgets to the contingency point, we would have to cut an additional $1.6 million. So where does that, oh, for a difference, sorry, 1.92% or $1.6 million? That's the contingency rule, that if we go to contingency, that's what we need to do. We need to go back and cut $1.6 million. Under contingency, each year, we tell you, we have to take out equipment, student supplies, and charge outside groups. That's just some archaic thing. We really don't make a lot of money off of that. Where do we cut from the 1.6 million? Almost everything we do is mandated. Here are the things that aren't mandated. Athletics is not, are not mandated, kindergarten is not mandated, even though now, the interesting thing is, there are school districts that are really struggling with their budgets, and kindergarten's not mandated, but now we have, everybody's going to get preschools. So maybe for some really hard-pressed districts, they have preschool, then not have kind, I don't know how that would work out. But it, well, kindergarten isn't mandated, but it's not. Elective classes, offering an advanced placement program, elementary music, middle-level world language. Believe it or not, you only need one librarian per school district by law, and then co-curricular and field trips. So those are the places we need to go under a contingency budget to make our cuts. Everything else is mandated. So again, our Proposition 1 is $87 million. If we went to contingency, it's $85 million and change. Oh, Proposition 2 is our transportation. We are, we keep our transportation proposition, we try to keep it on a replacement, five-year replacement cycle, so that we don't have peaks and valleys. So we have a comprehensive system for replacing our vehicles to keep our students safe. This year's proposition is $900,000. If we go to the next slide, you'll see that after, not that slide, the next one, after state aid on transportation, that $900,000 costs the district $400,000. So our aid is at 55.1% for transportation. We have a budget hearing on May 12th, not to confuse that with all of the budget meetings that we've been having up until this point. The budget hearing is just a budget hearing. It's a legal hearing. Nothing can change after that point. A lot of people wait till the budget hearing to try and give input. The input has been in the month prior to this and up until this evening, when the budget gets adopted, that's the input period. And again, we have budget input group meetings throughout the year, but May 12th is just a public hearing. The vote is on May 20th, the last day to register is May 12th. And the polls open, it's here at Haveland Middle School, polls open at 6:00 AM, and they close at 9:00 PM. Now that you've heard this budget presentation for the fourth time, I don't know, but people may, you have new questions each time. Is there any questions?
Just a couple of comments, actually. I think you and Wayne and the rest of your administrative staff did a great job preparing this proposed budget, got us down to where we need to be. The thing that, one of the things that concerned me is the student population drop. It's, looking at your chart, it's over 200 kids for the year coming. That's about double what's been happening for the last five or six years, according to your chart here.
I'm not sure which chart.
One of you, we just presented.
Slide 12.
Slide 12.
Oh, that's over a two-year. That one should be over a two-year. We are losing 100 a year, not two. So I'll have to check that slide.
Okay, well, it's not written that way.
Okay, I will check that.
The date when the data was pulled is this year, so...
Okay, so it's...
Sorry about that, Gary. It's about 100 a year.
About 100.
Right now, we're at 77 for this year.
So, with that being said, would that reflect the student cost, per student cost? That's wrong too, then, that number.
No, the per pupil cost.
The per pupil cost is correct.
Yeah, but that's two, that's for 200-plus kids. But for the year itself, it should be less than that.
Right, that's a state number, though?
There you go.
These are your numbers, I don't know whose numbers they are. The number on top.
Yeah, the, those numbers come from the, from the state, and it's based on expenses. Actually, I'll go right back to the slide.
Slide 12.
I know, but they're, they're based, you divide the amount of students into the, into your...
Right. And, and I guess...
Your budget number, and it comes out to that.
Yeah, so what happened between the year 13, 14, and 14, 15 is when the, is when the information was taken. So I just need to adjust the time of the year that the information was taken, because we're mid-year right now. So for 14, 15, we're looking at an enrollment that's, that we're, you know, hope, you know, imagining will happen, and is estimated at this point in time, so...
Yeah, so, so if the enrollment drops, the cost per student drops.
Right.
I mean, if...
Goes up.
Not, goes up. No, but I mean, if, if the enrollment goes to rather 200 to 100, then the cost per child goes down.
Right, if you get, yeah, more students, right.
We'll check that.
Yeah, and I'll adjust that for...
Add some clarity to it.
The other comment I have is on the tax rebate. I don't know if, how much more information you have from the, from the state, but the way I read into it is, whatever tax increase is incurred by, whether it be town of Hyde Park residents, town of Clinton, town of Kipsey, that's 100% rebate of that?
Of the increase, yep.
Of the increase. So that's kind of good news for Clinton and town of Kipsey and such.
And I think there was a question last time with regards to how folks go after that. And if you're registered for STAR, you're automatically right to go for that. So that's a...
They do it for you.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
So the only, the only, the only taxpayers at risk are those who fail to follow the, the assistance of the state or the multiple announcements of the state that we had to refile on STAR this year.
Right.
Because they were looking to eliminate those that were taking double STARS.
Yes.
People that were claiming STAR exemptions on two different properties within the state, which was not covered. So this year, they went through and found a way of, by having everybody re-register the STAR, they would only get credit for one STAR. So basically, the difference, for most, for the greatest majority of people who vote for the budget, or if we went to contingency, the actual taxes netted out paid by the end of the year will be exactly the same.
Yep. The only difference is that the program would go under contingency, so, under both circumstances.
Yeah, so we lose out, we lose out in services for the kids, we lose out in services for the community. But the net effect at the end of the year is that they will have, we will have paid the same taxes either way.
Yep.
And the only other question I got is, and I'm not sure, I've seen it stated twice, that you, you have to apply?
You do not have to apply.
If you're on, if you've got a STAR exemption, you will automatically get the check. All right. Anything else? Thank you, Wayne. Thank you, Greer.
Yeah, just, just, I'm sorry, yeah, no, I'm sorry. I was asleep at the wheel there. No, no, it was my fault. I, just, just as a general comment, you know, just, you know, it's going to, I think, you know, we're going to have to pay the pipe at some point, you know, and I think Greer made that very clear about the, the use of the fund balance. I mean, you know, it's pretty dramatic when you see that you don't have the fund balance to apply what's going to happen. So I think, you know, that that day will come, don't know when, because we've been pretty, you know, judicious with our spending over the years, but that day will come. You know, and then another, you know, concern, you know, Gary kind of alluded to it about the, the drop in student enrollment. And, you know, we're going to have to get pretty creative. I recognize there is a large number of fixed costs in the district that, it doesn't matter whether you have 1,000 kids or, you know, 4,000 or 5,000 kids that, you know, you're going to have to endure. But again, we're going to have to, you know, take a, a close look going forward and watch... But again, we're gonna have to, you know, take a, a close look going forward and watch our enrollment carefully. You know, we were in the scenario a couple of years ago of, of having to close a school, and, you know, that's where, how we got there. And, you know, we're just, we're gonna have to watch this stuff carefully, because, you know, when you look at the cost per student, you know, continuing to rise, I mean, that's a symptom of, of, you know, lowering enrollment with the costs kind of continuing to rise instead of, you know, trying to level them off. So that's just a general statement. That's not a direction anybody. Now, the only other comment I did have, you know, I have already expressed my concern again, but I will express it again, especially in light of what action we're gonna take on the agenda this evening. I still have a concern about dropping the Dina students at the high school. So I guess we'll have to kind of see how that goes, you know, but we probably should be prepared depending on what transpires over the next few months, you know, and we'll certainly have some discussion about that move later on in the agenda. But I just, you know, I, I still want to go on the record and express my, my concern for that.
Very good, thank you, and we will continue to monitor that. Thanks, Wayne. I would like to thank Wayne Cora and Aviva, and actually, the rest of the administrative team, some of them are here. This is a collaborative effort. We do it, for the most part, together. Some of us have to, in some years, roll up our sleeves and make some really tough decisions that are never easy, because they always affect people that we employ and children that we serve. So it's, it's never easy when we look at these cuts, but I want to thank the administrative team for really rolling up their sleeves, as they do every year, so. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna be brief on this portion, because the real value in the parent survey is to look at the results by building. And I really want to thank Eric, because it was just fortuitous that tonight, he did his presentation and he did exactly what we said we were gonna do with the results, and that is to look at the results, try to analyze what they're telling you, and then move forward with an action plan to address them. And that is exactly why we did the survey. When you look at the survey as a district-wide survey, it's kind, can be difficult to interpret the skills. You can, you can get some general thoughts, but the real value is the building level. On our website and on each school website, all of the results are published by school. So I'll go through some of the district results. Oh, that's too small. Basically, this year, we had 718 parents participate in the survey. That was excellent news. We have 3,600 students, so to have 718 surveys turned back in is phenomenal. When we did the survey last year, we had about 500, and so this is an increase. This shows, and that's part of where you want to get to. You want to build some trust in the community that if we're gonna ask them to fill out surveys, we're gonna do something with the result, and that we value their participation. So that was a great response rate.
Greer, if I could just interrupt at this point, because it may not be clear to everyone. We cite three different sources for the, for the input to that. We have the email invitations, which people had, fill out the, they could log on, fill it out. We also had the, the open web link. The last one says responses from QR code. That's not quite self-explanatory.
Okay, the QR code, if you are out and about and you see those little boxes with squiggly things and the 21-year-olds, 12-year-olds, and sometime 80-year-olds, that like, instead of paying for something, they hold their smartphone up to a, they, the QR code. They can actually access information. So we had posters hung throughout the district with a QR code. That's those little boxes with the squiggly signs. So if somebody had a smartphone, they could actually just go click on it with their smartphone and then take the survey right there. They didn't have to access their email, they didn't have to go, log on to the website. They could just click and play. It was a new feature this year. This is the breakdown of where we got the responses, or the, the percentage of responses. So, you know, for example, at, at the bottom there is Violet Avenue. Well, that 8% is out of the total number, so there were 58 parents at Violet Avenue that filled out the survey. Again, we, you know, all the buildings look at how can we increase participation and, and work on that. But we did overall, even, even statistically, the size of the school of Violet Avenue, to get 58 parents and up the line is very significant. We want to increase that, and they, the wheels are already spinning in the buildings on how to do that. This was just some breakdown on what kinds of services parents receive. If they wanted to indicate that, that was optional. The overall perceptions, and I didn't anticipate this was gonna be so far away. I'm gonna have to move closer. So overall, our parents commented that they'd like to be contacted more frequently about academic and behavior problems, should be addressed earlier. I'm gonna fire up my computer, 'cause I had no idea when we did the presentation in here, I wouldn't be able to see the screen. And several parents requested that teachers provide up-to-date information online. That was, these are three recurring themes. We do have a student management system that will permit that. We are gonna move forward with plans. It's a system that, you know, we purchased with the full intention of being able to communicate with our parents online, and we're gonna move forward with that, and this survey supports that we move in that direction. My computer's firing up. So overall, the amount of communication, thanks, Dan. The, I'm not gonna go through each one of these, but overall, people were pleased with the communication that they received from the school. As you heard from Eric's, a lot of the feedback that we got was that we're receiving information, but we needed to be more specific. That was one of the other overriding themes. Andy, just a touchscreen. We asked a lot of questions about Common Core and information, and basically what we found out was we're getting information about the Common Core, but it's not specific enough. So we know, and it wasn't, there wasn't enough available at the secondary level. I'm just extrapolating some of this. One of the other interesting things is that we found out that parents are helping their students with homework. A large percentage of students are helping their students with homework. Another interesting fact is that 84% of our parents are helping their students with reading beyond homework. And then the percentage drops down for math. So that tells us, that discrepancy tells us that parents are pretty comfortable helping their students with reading beyond homework, but maybe not so much in math. So that guides our thinking in what resources can we, our parents, to help them assist their, their children at home. Overwhelmingly, people felt welcome in the school. Some, there were some questions about how they could become more involved. One of the things we learned from the survey was we have these building leadership teams. Our survey results indicated that very few people know about the building leadership teams and that parents can volunteer. So again, that's a matter of just really making an awareness campaign. A lot of parents felt that they were informed about academics and performance, but they're not clear about the content. So again, opening up the lines of communication. So I know how my child is scoring or being graded, but I'm not really sure what they're working on, on a daily basis. Overwhelmingly, district-wide, my child's teachers are available to talk about my child's learning with me. That was a positive result. And the school hosts annual information nights. Those were, got high marks. But again, there's a lot of room for growth and a lot of room for growth and a lot of direction that can be given. So from the district-wide survey, each building has their results. And all of the buildings were asked to do a couple of things. Talk about their three highlights. What are the things that are worth celebrating? What are we doing really well? The second piece was, what are we doing that needs improvement? And let's talk about it at our faculty meetings, our PTA meetings, and our building leadership team meetings. And based on the areas that are identified as needing growth, that is how we are going to make our goals for the coming year. And as you could see from Eric's presentation, they're already working on that. So some of the things that we're doing district-wide, again, is to look at our online communication, looking at our, the participation in our building leadership teams, how to get more interest in that. And one of the other things that came up at the district level was the use of our schools. We got a lot of interesting responses on that. People didn't, don't quite know how to use our schools. You know, they come to the schools for events, but they really don't know, what does it mean? Is my school open to the community? So to that end, we are gonna have a, some focus groups on May 28th. And on May 28th, myself nor any, and none of the other administrators will be in the room, and K-12 Insight, which is the company that we use for the survey, will invite community members in, parents in, and even staff in for three focus group sessions. And those will be open. They'll be able to come in and talk about what, what, how do they envision our schools to be used by the community? What are some of the roadblocks? What are some of the potentials? And then on May 29th is our next district leadership team, and the K-12 Insight group will take the information, at least the general findings, and be able to talk to the district leadership team about the results from those focus groups. K-12 Insight will perform, will provide an in-depth report on, on that, on those forums at a later date, but they'll, they'll have enough information to talk to the district leadership about what they found. A lot of questions have come up recently about the use of our athletic facility, and how do I access that, how do I use it, what are the rules? As well as, how does the community use our schools in general? So that will be later on in May. And please visit all of the schools and the district website to take a look at the survey. If you're interested in finding out how your school is responding to the survey, please contact your building principal. They can let you know when this is being discussed at building leadership teams, PTA meetings, and any results that they have. So that is our parent survey in a nutshell.
Do you know if there's any corrections for the possibility that someone may have taken the survey more, more than once?
Yeah, they, they actually have a pretty sophisticated mechanism, so. And we don't, and there was a lot of discussions at our district leadership team about anonymity versus confidentiality. But they can track where, this is all housed outside of the school. But they can actually track, so they have a, a software system, so that if someone's taking it from the same computer and repeatedly doing something, they, they can track that. We do have some parents that had students at multiple levels, and they can access the survey to take one for their elementary child, one for their middle level, and one for their high school. So that isn't an anomaly. But they have a pretty sophisticated software system to guard against somebody who might just log on.
So they're aware of the situation. Did they make corrections in the data we, we saw because of it?
They indicated that they did not need to make any corrections to our data.
Okay. What that says is that nobody tried to skew.
Nobody tried to do it, yeah.
Okay.
You know, whenever you do one of these exercises, I think it's important that, at some point, obviously, you try to do a corrective action plan, if you will, on the things you need to work on. And then, you know, probably, you know, wanna look to resurvey, you know, whatever interval, a year or whatever. So I guess, is there a plan to do that? I mean, obviously, the buildings all have their things to work on, but, you know, it's nice to know that we're doing some things pretty well, and, but we're doing some other things that probably not so well, and we need to work to improve them. So I wanted to know what kind of, what thought process you had for that.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, we are continuing with our, with K-12 Insight next year. So a couple of things. Last year, because of our status as a focused district, we were required by New York State to conduct the parent, staff, and student survey. And first year out in a survey, you get mixed results. We had some schools where, you know, there wasn't a lot of participation. And one of the things that we determined that we wanted to do is we wanted to replicate that. But we had enough information from that survey to say, we really need to hear from the parents about their involvement. The gist of that survey was a little bit different. So we did this parent involvement as an interim, so we could get the information from parents about how they're involved. The, the survey that was done last year for teachers, students, and parents, we are going to replicate next year. And that way, we can measure growth, hopefully, measure growth. So yes, there is a plan to conduct these surveys, so that we say we're conducting a survey, we say we're gonna take an action plan, and then are we actually measuring growth? An interesting thing happened at the student level at the high school. When Barbara Marine shared the, the student results with the students, many of the students were really quite a bit surprised, because they said, that's not representative. And when you looked at the number of students who actually participated in the survey, well, that might have explained it. And so there were a lot of bumps and bruises on the, in beginning a culture, a ser, a culture of survey. And we really feel that we've made strides for participation. So yes, there's absolutely a plan to replicate the DTS DE survey next year, which has a component of parent involvement, but it has many other components as well. And next year, we'll do the full survey, where we in, survey the students, the staff, and the parents. And we have a lot of ideas about how to increase our participation. One of the other things that the buildings did was to look at the survey from last year and the parent involvement survey, and the, and the points where they were together to see, are there recurring themes even among the two? So the plan is to continue and to have this as a valuable tool that we can measure our growth.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, moving on on our agenda. May I have a motion to go into public participation, please?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. I'd like to invite anybody who would like to speak, to step forward and speak at the podium. Identify yourself, please. And we ask that you try and keep your remarks to somewhere in the neighborhood of three minutes. There will be no direct interaction with them, but we will take time at the end of this period to comment on any of the items that we feel necessary.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Michael Burdis. I'm, pardon me, president of Taylor Manufacturing. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments based on the discussion I heard here earlier this evening. I think most of you on the board know that Taylor Manufacturing has been in Dutchess County for 103 years. And I want to put this project a little bit in perspective, because it's, a part of it is, is about job retention and a part of it is about job growth. And, and let me, let me address the growth part of it first. Taylor Manufacturing builds machinery, which is generally captioned as capital equipment. So what that means in our business model is that you can have much larger swings in business than you can if you're a company that makes things that are consumed by all of us. So just to put it in perspective, prior to the bursting of the housing bubble in 2006 and 2007, we were a company of 37 employees. And when that happened, we went to 17. The point I'm making is, and, and many of you or a few of you referred to the crystal ball earlier tonight. If you can predict where the housing market's going to go in the next five or 10 years, then you'd probably be able to predict our business. Because the machines that we build are sold to companies that build things for houses, like kitchens, windows, doors, staircase components. The other thing I wanted to tell you about job retention, and, and this is really to your, sir, your point, is there are other. your, sir, your point, is there are other opportunities and other places for Taylor to go, and I can explain that just by telling you a little bit about our history. The last time we had the run-up in our business, which started in the 90s and then carried over into the, the turn of the century, and then sort of collapsed in 2006, 2007, we purchased a company in Greensboro, North Carolina that was very much like us. The owner at that time was in his 70s and he wanted to retire. And so we purchased this company, and we still, and we started to operate that company, and we moved some of our products down to that company, which is in the city limits of Greensboro, North Carolina. And, and bought a piece of real estate, which we still own. And, and, and to put it in perspective, the facility we have in Poughkeepsie is 37,000 square feet on a couple of acres. The facility that we purchased in Greensboro was 30,000 square feet on 16 acres of land. The taxes that we currently pay in the city of Poughkeepsie in a calendar year, including both property and school, are approximately $36,000, maybe 37,000, 38,000. The taxes that we pay in the city of Greensboro are 17. So there is a real difference. I wanted to make that point. And then the last comment I'd like to make is that, in the context of job retention and, and, and job growth, I thought it was a very interesting comment that someone made earlier about setting precedent about businesses moving from one, one location to another. I thought that was excellent. But what you have to understand here with this move is that this is a tremendous stretch for us. Because we're going from a building that has 37,000 feet to one that has 107,000. And all of the expenses that go along with that. And we're going to attempt to grow our business back to where it was. But in order to do that, we have to have a bigger building. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ron Hicks, work for Dutchess County. I'm responsible for strategic planning and development. I don't represent the IDA, but I do work with them. I've worked with them for years in, in New York State and other states. I just want to give you some clarity, because you raised a, I can't see your name, sir. You have to forgive me. I'm getting very old, so I, I can't see that type. Mr. Sheldon, thank you. You raised a couple of very good points. And I want to just give you some history and clarity here. Dutchess County has had a jail problem for, for a decade. And the new county executive decided he's going to resolve the problem. And so we were responsible for identifying sites in Dutchess County that were suitable. And one of the sites that, as the county executive was coming in, that was identified, was at the Hudson River Psychiatric Center between Route 9G and Route 9. It was kind of smack in the middle of it, on the, on the north end of the property. Now, I don't get involved in jails. My job is to diversify the economy, generate jobs, and you can imagine how, how difficult my job is. But I got involved because the developer that I was working with in New Jersey to attract them, to make a, an enormous investment in that property, not for the purchase of it, but for the remediation of the property, which is going to cost tens of millions of dollars. And this property, even during an expansion in our economy, failed to be developed. We got them up here, we, we hooked them, and they took notice of our interest in the property on the psychiatric center for a jail. And a few of their, or two of their investors, said that if the county continues to express interest in this property, we will not invest in it. And so they did lose those investors, and the project actually died. It was shortly after resurrected when we made the commitment that, should someone want to come in here and spend tens of millions of dollars to develop property that has long been vacant and blighted on our, on our, in our community, we will not stand in the way. We will find an option. We've been dealing with this problem for 10 years, so we're, we certainly have a little bit more time to deal with it. At that time, Mr. Burdis had approached the county because the land that he has is contiguous to the jail. And I think at the time, and I'm not going to speak for him, but, you know, the cost of new construction on an industrial building, from what I understand, is at a low of $75 per, per square foot, to a high in, in New York State of about 120, $25 per square foot. Well, building a new facility is a lot more expensive than buying an old one. And we have 2-point million, 2-point million square feet of vacant industrial and commercial space, just like the Fargo building in Dutchess County. I believe the Fargo manufacturing facility's been vacant for at least a decade. And manufacturers are not moving to New York State. And contrary to the governor's statements, it was made before, I wish they were, but they are not. And it's one of the reasons why, as Mr. Burdis pointed out, is the differential, differential in taxes, but also the permitting, the regulatory process, which is very cumbersome. So, Mr. Burdis approached us and said, you know, this, the cost of building a new building is, is very high. He had identified a manufacturing building nearby, it was much larger than, than he needed, but that it would actually be less expensive than building a new building. And they asked us if we were interested in buying the property. And, and so we agreed. And we are not settled on this jail issue. We don't know whether, what we will do moving forward. It's not my responsibility, thank God. But it is my responsibility to retain and attract jobs. And when we look at a manufacturer like Mr. Burgess and Taylor, as I said before, they aren't coming to New York. So we do a risk assessment, and you are absolutely right. IDAs should not be incentivizing moves from one community to the other, nor from one county or, you know, anywhere within New York State. But when we see a project like this, regardless of the number of jobs, these are good-paying jobs, and they have potential for growth. And I know you saw a demonstration on something that they have received a patent on. Now, I guess, you got that today? The patent? So, that's very exciting. And to have somebody with a vested interest in this community, and you meant, he mentioned at the last meeting that the person who actually designed this was a Hyde Park resident, as was I, was born and raised in Hyde Park and went through the school system. That is rare. Most of the businesses are the likes of those who are public companies that are looking to maximize a profit. They're looking to survive. And I'm grateful that they have decided to commit to our area and stay here and grow here, but they are taking a big risk. And the pilot programs are really designed to create stability, at least in Dutchess County, to create stability for the company. But it also creates stability for the taxing jurisdiction. Because I have not seen anyone's property values go up. If, if they have, congratulations. And I hope they go up because it affects our budget and the county just as much as it affects you guys in the school board. But the property values aren't going up. They're going down. That's the trend. So, without a pilot, there is no stability for this property and the revenue that you get for it. And any company, any resident for that matter, can go and challenge their assessment. And companies do a tax, certainly can do that, and, and can actually reduce what they pay. So, the pilot does create that stability. And we wouldn't, or at least advocate for incentives for a business to move from one town or another. But when it comes to a manufacturer like this, that are so rare, they are high-risk. And they can go to other states, they can go to other countries. So, in, in this case, the IDA really leaves it to the taxing jurisdictions, if the, if the applicant wants to do something unique, for the taxing jurisdictions to decide if they want to approve such a pilot. And the county does not stand in the way. If the town and the school district want to do something, the county abides by that. We don't, we receive the smallest portion, I think, as well. But that's the purpose, is to create that stability. We, in the county, have mandates like you do, unfortunately. But when our costs go up, we have the ability to raise taxes. When you're a business, you don't have that ability. You don't have that benefit. You can't raise your prices, or you'll lose even more. So, the cost of doing business in New York is extremely high. And I'm grateful that they are making a commitment here. And I just wanted to make that clarification, because I didn't want anyone to think that there was anything else going on, but just trying to retain a business, a manufacturer that's important to our community. And, and hopefully, create that stability for both the applicant and the taxing jurisdiction. Thank you.
Just coming up here again with my concerns of the loss of the dean of students for the high school. It was justified last year with the movement of our AP, and with the unknown future of what's going to happen now with Barbara Marine resigning as principal. I, I don't see how anything has changed from last year to this year. I really am concerned, and I feel it's still justified to have this position, since we are still going through the changes that we went through last year. You know, I, I, out of the 77 students that have gone in this last year, I mean, how many can we say? How many came out of FDR? Like, are numbers, have they dropped? Are all 77 out of FDR that? No. So, you know, I just, I can't see how it wouldn't be justified this year with the loss of our lead principal, when it was justified last year as an AP. Thanks.
Going once, going twice? May I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Would anyone on the board like to comment on any of the comments we've just heard?
You know, I, I don't want to belabor it. And I certainly appreciate anyone who is an employer in Dutchess County and, and, and wish you all the, the best of luck in, in the move. I mean, I have spent a good portion of my life working in, in the industrial, with industrial manufacture here in Dutchess County, which there aren't many of. Again, my, my sole concern is just for the other taxpayers, the residential taxpayers in this school district, and, and what that impact is. And I know that there's a lot of people who are living very close to the edge, and, and any, any increase that they see is, is painful. And that, that's where my motivation lies at this point. But, you know, I wish you the best of luck in, in your endeavor. And I do hope that the IDA is successful in, in bringing others in rather than a matter of just moving industry around.
I think that I have had trouble wrapping my head around this pilot, in part because, from my perspective, the process has been rushed. It's been hard to understand motivations. It's not a typical situation where a pilot is called for. It's not a new business, it's not new tax revenue. It's revenue or tax revenue that's moving from one location to another. Taken all together and without being able to see all of the pieces that are moving here, and all of the other aspects of it, it didn't smell right. I still have reservations about it, from the perspective of a homeowner and a taxpayer on residential property. It's much easier for me to empathize with homeowners and the fact that most homeowners don't have any opportunity whatsoever to negotiate their taxes on their, on their property. From those perspectives, it makes me very cautious about supporting a pilot. On the other hand, this appears to be at least revenue-neutral to the district in terms of the property taxes over the next 10 years. Furthermore, it looks as if motivated properly, the Dutchess County, the body that grants these, I've dropped the phrase.
IDA.
The IDA, could in fact implement the, the pilot without our approval. So, given the fact that, furthermore, I will say that it does, it does carry some weight, and did in fact make it easier for me to support this, when, is it Bergen, Mr. Bergen, took the time to, to come and speak with us. It's certainly important to me to see business expand and grow in Hyde Park. So, for, you know, it's, it's a complex situation. But when I look at the facts, I don't have, I don't have enough facts to, to justify the decision, but I don't have enough facts to not justify it. Given that situation, I think I'm going to err on the side of trying to increase the growth of business in our area.
Anyone else? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt a consent? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the board policy, yes. We have presented to us by, from the policy committee, several board policies that we've already reviewed once, and that we're looking to adopt them tonight. Those include purchasing regulations, competitive bidding requirements, contracting professional services, vendor relations, alcohol and drug testing of employees, regulations regarding that, and also policy on drug-free workplace. May I have a motion to adopt those identified board policies?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. And I'd like to thank the policy committee for their very diligent work in, in presenting this to us and getting, keeping us moving along in our attempts to review all of the policies by the end of the year. All right, now we can move on to the consent agenda. This, the consent agenda covers items 10-2, to 10-2, 10.2 through 10.9. May I have a motion to adopt, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think we probably let the superintendent explain rather significant personnel item.
Yes.
You know, so.
So, first and foremost, we'd really like to acknowledge Barbara Marine and her service as the high school principal for the last, is it seven? Years? I have to count up. Barbara has done an excellent job at FTR. She stepped forward at a time when the district was in dire need because we were about to open up school, and had a month before school was opening, and didn't, and a principal that was high, that had been with us for a year, founded a new position. And so we were about to open up school without a building principal. Barbara stepped forward and filled that slot for a number of years. During that time period, this, the high school was pretty much a mess when she took over, as far as, you know, some of the structures and discipline and programs and systems. And she really worked hard to turn that ship around, and it has certainly turned around and headed in the right direction. And Barbara was in the position of Director of Fine and Performing Arts before she took on the building principalship. And so, a couple of weeks ago, we had announced that Paul Scott Nato was retiring, our Director of Fine and Performing Arts. And Barbara approached me and said she was interested in going back to the position of Director of Fine and Performing Arts. She had indicated that she was planning on staying as the high school principal for another year, and that was her plan. And then when this opportunity opened up, she really saw it as a, a way to maybe continue for a couple of years, and really wanted to just move into the position that she had had before. So, a very unusual move, but I think it's a, it's a great opportunity. I think there are a lot of people that get to the point where they're looking at retirement and say, "I'd like to work for a little while longer and you make some decisions." And this was an opportunity. And she saw it as an opportunity, and we support this opportunity for Barbara. She did a great job when she was there. We expect that she'll continue to do a great job. It will certainly help in any transition we have, that Barbara is not leaving us. So all of the knowledge about how the building is run and operates will still be very easily accessible. So, I noticed that Barbara slipped out right before we were going to do this. So, it's a little bit difficult to do it. So, we're actually really... So, we're actually really mixed feelings, you know. We're, we're sad to see Barbara go, we're very sad to see Paul go, but this, this is an opportunity for us to keep an administrator that's been with the district for a very long time. Barbara was a teacher in the district, then she became an administrator, then she became the high school principal, and now she's just moving into a different administrative position. The high school principalship is the most time-consuming job there is in the district, and we certainly appreciate all of her years of service, and, you know, again, it's really mixed feelings. We're going to keep her, but not in that position, and so, based on the, how this resignation and appointment goes, our plan is to advertise immediately for a high school principal and to begin that search.
Yeah, I just, you know, add to that, that, you know, it's hard really to add much more to what you said, other than, you know, it, it is a difficult position, and, you know, there was a time where, and I look at it, Ron, who I met in this building in seventh grade thirty-five years ago, you know, that it seemed like, you know, when, when I was growing up, high school principals were around forever, you know, and, you know, both principals and assistant principals, you know, you just had a cadre, you know, one or two, you know, assistants would lead to get a better job, but for the most part, it was a, the same cadre of people. And, you know, there's a lot more turnover now because I think it's become a more demanding position, and it's a, a very difficult position, you know, and so, I certainly appreciate, you know, that when somebody, you know, late in their career says, "It's, it's time to let the foot off the gas a little bit," and I don't mean that from a work ethic point of view, but just from the chaos of, of just, you know, what that, that job demands and how it eats away at you. It is a very consuming job, and I can certainly appreciate, you know, what, what Barbara was thinking, and I, and, you know, I do thank her for her time at the high school, and I, I think this is a, an interesting opportunity, so, yeah.
It reminds me of the conversation I had with Eileen Karins when I first met her. Eileen had retired from North Park Elementary as a building principal and went to help out at Regina Chilly for a couple of months.
It was supposed to be for a year, no more.
And she's been there for eight years.
Eight years, I think, or seven years, yeah.
Similarly, Barbara stepped up to the plate when we, when the school district needed a high school principal in a month's notice, and eight years later, you know, she's still standing, so, you know, great job.
Anyone else? Just in case some people didn't get an opportunity, the way the, the way the agenda is presented, this item is presented, Barbara, will we continue in her position as principal of the high school until we close her business on June thirtieth? She will then assume a tenured appointment to the position of K through twelve Director of Fine Arts and Performance effective July first. May I have a motion to adopt? Uh, we've already done that.
We got one there, so we're ready to go. Just need to.
All those in favor? Moving on to new business, may I have a motion to adopt the special education placements?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Quick summary, with current year business, we had seventeen meetings presented to us for approval. They included one transfer student being classified, one initial eligibility student being classified, two current students in the CSE program being declassified, and in addition to that, we have program reviews of twelve CSE programs and one CPSC. For the upcoming year, we had thirty-three meetings, of which thirty-one were presented from the CSE, and that included two students who are being outplaced, and two from the CPSC, which is the preschool program, for a total of thirty-three. All those in favor? Motion carried. We will now vote on adoption of the proposed budget. May I have a motion to adopt the budget as presented tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? So we'll move forward with the budget as presented. All those in favor? No, no objections? Prepare the contingency budget. May I have a motion to adopt the contingency budget?
So moved.
Second.
As presented in the documents we, we presented with. Any discussion? All those in favor? Moving on to eleven-four, the school property tax report. Note here, the school property tax report is required by law and must be submitted to the State Education Department within twenty-four hours after the budget is adopted by the Board of Education, transmitted to local news media, and appended to the district's budget package to be made available to the community.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? May I have a, a motion to adopt the election officials for the upcoming election as presented to us by the district clerk?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion adopted. We now move on to the item we discussed earlier. May I have a motion to adopt the Taylor pilot? There is, can I read this heavy? Be it resolved that the Board of Education, subject to the review and recommendation by legal counsels, consents to a payment in lieu of agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement between entered-in parties, Parker Hamilton Corp., James L. Taylor Manufacturing Company, and Dutchess County Industrial Development Agency, for the ten-year term commencing on March first, two thousand and fifteen, which provides for real property tax exemption scheduled that deviates from the DCIDAs' uniform tax exemption policy. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Hold.
Pardon?
We need a motion.
So moved.
I'm sorry. May I have a motion as amended by the?
Yeah, I'll move it as you read it.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Against? The vote is four to one, the motion is carried. Now voting on the HPTA side agreement?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And finally, the district participate race to the top.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just want to maybe explain a little. Basically, what happened was, in the fall, we had a resolution to opt out of the race to the top, and, and the consideration on opting out was based on the fact of the whole data privacy, and by act of legislation, they've removed that. So, this allows us to recoup the money that we forfeited, and the, the money for this year, we had already agreed that that money would go to BOSI, so this is a way for them to also recoup what they originally were, were counting on. So, again, this is a resolution that, in light of the fact that it became a moot point by legislation, then give us the money back so we can give it to BOSI's. So, in a nutshell, that's what happened. So, I, I guess, you know, it just, I will comment that if it weren't for the number of school districts and PTAs and parents who made their voices known, that legislation would not have happened, so I want to thank the board for supporting the original resolution so that our concerns were heard in Albany, and they were.
So we can take credit for having moved Mount Cuomo and friends. The SED and the legislation has responded to the criticism and requests of the public, and I think that's a marked achievement. We have a motion, we have discussion, all those in favor? Motion carried. May I have a motion to return for a second public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Is there anyone would like to comment at this time? You can save his time, Bobby, by getting up there.
I'm allowed seconds, all right? I, I just want to thank you for your support of this project, and I, I apologize on behalf of the IDA for, for not bringing this in the normal course of business. It went to the town taxing jurisdiction first, but I made an offer at the Tuesday meeting that I'd be happy to come to a workshop and present the economic development strategy and the difficulties that we deal with, and, and what a lot of these economic incentives mean to, not only to the businesses, but the taxing jurisdiction, and that offer still stands. I'd love to come anytime and present that at a workshop, and again, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Barb has done a great job at FDR for the three years that I've been there, and she's been there for eight years total. So, my interest in what's going on at FDR is because I will be there until two thousand and twenty-two, so I'm very interested in how this plays out. I just have a question on the agenda. We were supposed to be on the agenda for the FDR Track Booster Club, but I only see the one for the boys lacrosse team, so I didn't know if there was a typo or if I missed it.
I was informed that it will be on the next agenda.
I was informed it was on this agenda.
It's not on here, we didn't see the information for it, so it means we don't have it.
Yeah, I haven't seen any paperwork.
I saw the wrong one. The one we have is what's on.
Is the lacrosse one. Okay, so you think we're on for the next one?
Did we receive one for the?
Yes, I submitted all the paperwork to, everything went to Janet on Monday of spring break, all our paperwork.
Okay, Monday of the break?
That, that Monday, yeah.
Okay, well, okay.
Yeah. By law, it's the bank account.
Will that hold you up at all?
Sorry. I'm just worried because we're footing the bill for the thing on May third for the Invitational, so I don't know how logistically that plays out. I just know all this stuff, all the payments are coming into the Booster Club. So, I was trying to get it all done before the actual Invitational.
We'll take possession of your firstborn child to secure it.
I don't know, that one, he's got, he's got two APs and a college grad, he's going, so I'm keeping that one. I'll let you know on the next one. So, all right, so if you could just somehow let me know about that booster for the track club. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? May I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Board Subcommittee reports, have we got any subcommittees reporting?
Yes, we had a Policy Subcommittee this week, reviewed and agreed upon quite a few items that'll be on the next board meeting, first reading.
Anything else? We did have, we did have the, the Audit Subcommittee meeting.
We did, I think we reported on that the last time, though. I thought we had, I think we've had a meeting since then, didn't we? I'm pretty sure we did. I could be wrong. I think we were at the high school.
Last meeting was on the tenth?
Yeah, didn't we have that? I think we were at the high school, didn't we? Weren't we since then? I don't remember the date, so.
We were at the district office.
No, I meant, I think we met at the high school after that, didn't we? Or did we not? I'm sorry, I don't remember.
We all mushed together.
I just had this funny feeling, we talked about it before, but I, I could be wrong.
All right. Oh, the action plan?
I'm waiting.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, you know what? I think we actually met the night before at a last board meeting, so I think, I don't, I think we did cover it at the last board meeting. We, we met on Wednesday, and that last board meeting was on Thursday.
Yeah. Upcoming meetings?
In the interest of time.
Friday, April twenty-fifth, the half-day elementary students' conferences. Monday, May fifth, the budget presentation at the PTA Council meeting. Thursday, May eighth, the Board of Educate, next Board of Education meeting, that meeting will be held at the Violet Avenue Elementary School. Monday, May twelfth, voter registration, last day to vote, register for the budget vote. Monday, May twelfth, the public hearing on the budget and the meet-the-candidate night.
Well, meet what candidate? One candidate.
No, I don't think.
So it'll be a public hearing on the budget on May twelfth, that will be held at the administrative offices. On Wednesday, May fourteenth, the budget presentation to the Clinton Town Hall, and then on Tuesday, May twentieth, the vote on the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen budget presentation, but, proposed budget, and the Board of Education member election. This is the annual district meeting. The polls will be open from six AM to nine PM on that date, and the voting will take place here at the Havillam Middle School in the gymnasium. I don't believe there's a need to enter into a second executive session.
Well, before we do, could I, could I just, since the, the petitions were due on Monday, could I ask the district clerk to kind of report on what happened and what can happen, and where we are with district, our Board of Education candidates?
So, we have one petition that was filed for Mr. Douglas Heater. There are two seats that are open, so what would happen is if there are any write-in votes, the person who receives the most write-in votes would gain a seat, and if there are no write-in votes and there is still an empty seat, then the board has the opportunity to appoint a qualified member.
Okay, so, you know, as we've been beating the drum incessantly at, at board meetings in the past, but I, I just can't emphasize enough, you know, to the community, whether you're out there or watching on, on TV, Channel twenty-two, you know, we're in a little interesting scenario that I don't think the district has faced in, I, I can't remember, in recent history. I mean, you know, I've been here over twenty years as a resident, and, and even before that, I don't ever recall a scenario where we had, you know, two seats open and only one candidate. You know, last couple of years has been, you know, actually, last, last year, we actually had a, a competition for race, for, for, for candidates for three seats, but, you know, a couple of years before that, it was, it was basically the incumbents one per seat or maybe just one per seat, whether it was an incumbent or not. So, you know, we're in a little bit of a, democratically, a little bit of a precarious situation, so, you know, I, I, just as a citizen, you know, I, I recognize the amount of time and commitment that's required to, to do this job, and it is certainly for zero remuneration as by law, but I, again, just want to emphasize, you know, this is not an ideal situation. I'm not a, a fan of appointing a board member, although that may be a better solution than having a six-member board, and we're, by the way, that authority to appoint somebody is only until the next election, so if we were in a scenario of appointing a board member, that, that would only last until next year's election, and then, then that seat would be again up for election, so that means three seats, because next year's a two, two seat, a two-member election next year. Finally, you know, if there is somebody interested in a serious about mounting a, a write-in campaign, you know, you need to take that fairly seriously because, you know, this is a kind of an, this is going to be a very interesting scenario this year, and, you know, one candidate has not really presented themselves, if you will, to the public as a candidate, and, you know, submitted themselves to a meet-the-candidate night, so to speak, and let a voter make an informed choice, so, you know, I, I just kind of urge the community to, to think carefully, and, you know, if, if, if a drum starts beating for a, a candidate, you know, you should, you know, consider it carefully and, and make your choice carefully, and as you should regardless, you know, but I also just, you know, state the obvious, if, if, you know, people don't really mess around with the machine and, you know, make the, the slide and, and, and write the name in or a name in, you know, we, we get write-ins every year, every year when we announce the results, there's, you know, one for this guy, two for that guy, three for this, you know, person, and, you know, you know, you're in great peril for, you know, you know, having somebody that might not have been the average voter's first choice. So, I think, you know, this is, this is a serious situation, and I, I just, I, I can't emphasize it enough. I'm really distressed by it. Personally, as a citizen, not as a board member, but as a citizen of this community, I, I find this, you know, to be of, of great concern and very troubling, so I, I hope people are listening and considering that. You know, I, I think, I don't know, I don't know what else to say. Again, I'm speaking as just a citizen, but, you know, think carefully as you go before, and I, I guess I would ask the district clerk, I mean, we, I, I tend to stay away from... And I guess I would ask the district clerk, I mean, we, I tend to stay away from, or the board, I think as a rule, tends to stay away from the notion of how the elections run. That's really the purview of Debbie Brosen, our district clerk, who does a great job of running the election. But I guess the only thing I would ask is that, I think, you know, if we could have clear instructions about how to do a write-in vote, because unlike another year where it's like, well, I'm making a statement, but it's really not going to matter if I write somebody in, it is going to matter this year, very much so. So, you know, to the extent that you're legally permitted to, I would hope that it's made clear to the public as they come in to vote how a write-in vote is to be done. You know, I don't know what's normally done or...
There's signs on the inside left side of every voting machine. And there will be pencils Velcroed next, we're going to put them above the papers so that you can clearly see that you can write the vote in. And on the absentee ballots, it does state to mark an X in the appropriate box for a candidate or to write in a name in the write-in vote section.
Yeah, and just as a, as a comment about writing in votes in those voting machines, the old lever-style machines, it's not sometimes very intuitive. I don't know if I've ever even done it myself. It's not particularly intuitive, so you have to really kind of pay attention to the instructions when you do it and write legibly, obviously, so that the vote counters can count. But just, just be aware of that. It's not as simple as, you know, it would be if you were doing a paper ballot.
And if anyone has any questions on how to write in a vote before entering the voting machine, the election officials that will be on site will be able to explain how to do that.
Because we're talking about preparation for the election, the other thing that I wanted to ask about was whether anybody's given any thought to reviewing the exit poll that we used last year and perhaps revising it? It looks like a no.
No, it's more like a, it's getting late and I'm fading, but...
I suggest that we put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
Anything else? I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you everyone for coming.